There we go, everybody's up. All right, Mayor Proton, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, so then we can go ahead and call this meeting to order. Clerk Colanga, can you please call the roll?
Just as a reminder, please indicate your physical location when I call your name. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Somerville.
City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Richardson. Councilmember Morgan. Can't, can't hear you.
Can you hear me better?
Yep.
Oh, I'm in Fort Wayne, Indiana, going through some county.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present, attending virtually from the City of Ypsilanti County of Washington.
Mr. Jones Chance.
President, City of Ypsilanti County of Washington.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum.
Would someone like to move to excuse Madam Mayor?
I'm going to excuse Mayor Richardson.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Morgan, I feel nervous with you in active motion with your camera on, so just be careful, please.
Say it again.
I said, I just feel a little nervous as you're actively in motion.
No, I'm sorry. I'm gonna take, I'm gonna turn the camera off and just listen on my ear, but thank you for your concern.
I just wish, want you to be careful. Okay. Clerk Colanga, next should be agenda approval.
Let's correct this.
All right, I understand.
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the agenda.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes or updates from anyone? All right, so all in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, awesome. Thank you.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is public comments. If anyone in the attendees list would like to make comment, please you may raise your hand. You'll have three minutes to address counsel. Counsel, it doesn't appear that anyone is raising their hand. It's okay, I can move forward with the agenda.
There is one person, Freddie, who just raised his hand.
All right. Freddie does have their hand raised. I'll allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to address counsel.
Hello, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to say that I heard the news story about the Black Lives Matter mural being defaced. And I just wanted to say that as not just a social worker in this community, but as a resident, I was not only outraged and upset to hear about that, but it also really motivated me to come tonight to attend this meeting and to hopefully hear ways that I could offer my own support for the community organizers and just for the community in general. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
If anyone else in the attendees list would like to make comments, please raise your hand. Seeing none, move on to the next agenda item, presentations. The only presentation tonight is a proclamation in honor of the Joe Lawrence Jazz Series. Whereas Frog Island has a rich history of jazz such as the Frog Island Blues Festival, a festival that is remembered by many. And whereas Joseph Lawrence, a professional guitarist, local recording artist, retired instructor and director of the music department at Washington Community College, past member of the group Masterpiece and soulful soulmates and a lifelong Ypsilanti resident, brought a fresh new jazz series to Ypsilanti Frog Island. And whereas it is the first African-American run series in Michigan. And whereas the goal for the series was to continue where the old Frog Island Jazz Festival left off. And whereas the Ypsilanti Frog Island Jazz Series hosted three concerts on Friday evenings all summer. And whereas there was a mixture of jazz such as a traditional straight ahead jazz and smooth jazz, mixing the old with the new. And whereas the series kicked off with performances by Cam and Bob Dylan, Straight Ahead, Kimmy Horn and more. And whereas Lawrence was the opening act each night of the series. And whereas Lawrence encouraged everyone to come out and visit local and historical spots or Ypsilanti Depot Town. And whereas the purpose of the series was to bring the community together after a year canceled and virtual events due to COVID-19 pandemic. And now therefore I lower out Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, on behalf of the City Council, the City of Ypsilanti supports the Joseph Lawrence Jazz Series.
Thank you, Clerk Colanga. I think I would just add that, you know, the Jazz Series was so successful this summer and into the fall, and folks were really excited and really pleased. It was a really excellent exhibit of, you know, folks coming together and doing something positive. It had no issues all summer long. And I mean, I heard just so many positive things about the Jazz Series. So I thank Johnny Lawrence and everyone else, Brian Foley and lots of other folks who contributed to putting that together. Steve, I see that you're unmuted. Did you have something on?
Oh, I just didn't mute myself, sorry. So is it the John E. Lawrence Jazz Series or the Joseph Lawrence Jazz Series?
You know, I didn't even notice that.
And I noticed that we had Bob Dylan playing. All right. Not sure.
I don't, I don't know either.
Anyway. That was my only question. I just kept reading this and going like, I thought it's.
You know what? I just overlooked that part. Honestly, it didn't even cross my mind. So I don't know. And I didn't write this, so unfortunately, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments or anything to add before we move on?
I support it as well, and I hope we do it again next year.
Thank you, Mr. Jones Chance. Clerk Colanga, we can move on to our ordinance for tonight.
All right, this section ordinances, first reading. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the city has an interest in protecting the health, safety and welfare of the community. And whereas the city has an adopted non-discrimination ordinance that reflects the policy goals of the city. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Commission has recommended the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance changes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the ordinance entitled Chapter 78 Administrative Update 2021 on first reading.
All right, so move.
And support. Is there a second?
Somebody.
Somebody.
Support.
Thank you. Bonnie, I see you came off, well, came on camera for us, so I'm assuming you have some things to share.
Yeah, it's a pretty straightforward update. We just updated some of the anti-discrimination language in this to refer to our overall anti-discrimination ordinance. We updated some of the gendered pronouns used throughout the chapter and then clarified a couple of the pieces surrounding the special events and the process for application. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Counsel, are you okay if we open the public hearing first and then take our questions after if there are any? So.
Thumbs up.
Thank you.
If any member of the attendees list would like to make comments specific to this ordinance amendment, please raise your hand. You'll have three minutes to address counsel. Does not appear that anyone likes to make comment if counsel is ready to close the public hearing.
Yes, please.
I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, on favor?
Aye.
All righty.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so question some counsel.
I have a comment.
Oh, all righty.
Just happy to see this come before us. Love it.
Any other questions or comments?
No comment, Mayor Proton.
Councilmember Wilcoxen, I see your hand up.
It just seems really straightforward and necessary changes. So, thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Bonnie, per usual. All right, well, Clerk Colanga, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
The six yes and one absence, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
We got the consent agenda, Resolution Number 2021-199. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution Number 2021-200, approving the minutes of September 14th, 2021. Resolution Number 2021-201, approving the appointments to boards and commissions. Resolution Number 2021-202, approving the typing, the tying of purple ribbons throughout the city for Domestic Balance Awareness Month. Resolution Number 2021-203, approving ordinance 1380, an ordinance to amend the Chapter 106, Article 5, Section 106-454A of the Court of Ordinances to adjust sewage disposal rates, second reading. Resolution Number 2021-204, approving ordinance 1381, an ordinance to amend Chapter 106, Article 5, Section 106-454B of the Court of Ordinances to adjust sewage disposal rates, second reading. Resolution Number 2021-205, approving ordinance 1382, an ordinance entitled Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment, Permissible Uses and Dimensional Modifications for Residential Zones, second reading.
I saw move.
Support.
Work.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Clerk Colanga, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries, six yes, one absence. Counsel, moving on to the next section of the agenda, resolutions, motions and discussions. Resolution Number 2021-206, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas funding has been programmed for the retrofitting of existing sidewalk ramps in the City of Ypsilanti. And whereas the City of Ypsilanti has solicited sealed bids for the project. And whereas Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC is the lowest bought by bidder and is being recommended by the city's engineering consultant for this project. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ypsilanti awards the 2020 Metro Rams contract to Great Lakes Contracting Solutions LLC for the bid amount of $58,469.25. And that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign this contract subject to the review by the city attorney and any change or orders are subject to review and approval by the city manager to facilitate the completion of this work.
I'll move.
Support.
All right, it's been properly moved and supported. Bonnie, you're back with us again.
This is pretty straightforward. We do this every year as part of our ADA ramp upgrade program. We did get the bids back for the CDBG program about halfway through the bidding cycle for these metro ramps. So unlike that, we don't have to reduce the ramps because we've already reduced the number of ramps that we were programing to this. And that's why this amount is closer to 50,000 than the CDBG bid was. But apart from that little fun hiccup of pricing, this is very straightforward. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Westler? All right, seeing none. Clerk Colanga, I'm sorry, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one absence. Counsel, moving on to the next item. Resolution Number 2021-207. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that having given notice of his withdrawal from city cases, the attorney-retainer agreement with the law office of Scott D. Bergfeld P L L C dated May 25th, 2021 is terminated and pursuant to set agreement, fees and expenses earned to this date be paid.
So.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. I see, Mr. Barr, do you have anything to share with us?
Not a lot, just we had a request by Attorney Berthold to withdraw from the representation of the city. And we have afforded that in the form of this resolution and request counsel to approve it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything from counsel? Councilmember Wilcoxen?
This seems to make our job a whole lot easier.
Sure does.
And that, and I thank Mr. Berthold for withdrawing.
All right, if there are no other comments, Clerk Colanga, you can go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence. Counsel, moving on to the next item, a discussion regarding the Black Lives Matter mural in Riverside Park. And as a part of that discussion, I will allow Trevor Stone and Trishay Duckworth to speak to this.
Yes, thank you. While they're being elevated to the panel, Annie and I asked for the discussion to be added. But we're all aware of what, you know, happened to Riverside Park this weekend. And so we wanted to be planful and have a conversation with the primary organizers so that we could, you know, move forward in collaboration with them to make sure this is rectified, but in a way that was thoughtful. So Trevor or Trishay, if you all want to share, talk with us, feel free.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So, yes, we all know what happened this weekend. We did have this in our presentation and knew that something like this could possibly happen. But even though you know it would possibly happen, it, wow, it just kind of didn't sit right like at all. Just the statement that it made, but I'm grateful for the statement that can come from our side to say that, you know, we're going to stand together and love as a community and help to rebuild. There have been a lot of things as far as people saying, well, it should have been there anyways. It's just artwork and it is artwork. It is an expression of a statement that we believe is very strong, but it also is a reminder of the work that needs to be done within our community. And, you know, to fight against racism and white supremacy in our communities. But I just thank you all for having this conversation. And Trevor's going to come on and kind of give some logistics. There are some things that we would like to present to you all, just to make this a little more meaningful, protect it a little more on this end. And just understand that it's a time for us to come together as community. There are so many people that have been awakened and that really want to join in this effort. And so, and we also spoke to Mr. John Lawrence today as well, who has some ideals about how we can make this a big celebration, a celebration of love, you know. So again, we just thank you all and thank you all for just being down there this weekend. That was so comforting to have you all there and just to have the support and the strong support of the community. So just thank you so much, and I will turn the rest over to Trevor.
Hey, everyone. Thanks for having us out here tonight. May I please have screen sharing capabilities, just so it would just be faster, show everyone a couple of things rather than say, if that's okay.
I promoted you to panelist. And now you're a co-host, so you should be allowed to share your screen.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Hey, let me know if you can see this. I was on mute for a second. Okay. Can you all see this?
No.
Or no? Is that a yeah?
No.
No. Come on. Here we go. Now, how are we doing? Is it working?
It's doing some.
Yeah, black screen.
Yeah, Trevor has started sharing, but nothing is up there.
Sorry for the slowdown, folks. I'll try to get through this tech. If not, I'll just, I'll just give it to you verbally, but just share a screen. Just share, share it all. Anything?
Yes, I see your screen now.
Yeah, but now my presentation's coming up. Still getting new. Come on, baby, works for me, works for me. There, you know what? What about this? Bam! Thank you, folks. Thanks for sticking with me. Okay, all right, all right, all right. Look, so, so I want to share with you all just a little bit about the logistical, physical process of restoring these murals, right? So, let me see, so we had this. Now we have this. Right, so if we're going to restore it back to this, you know, people threw paint on it, and if we just painted over it, some people speaking like, just paint over, just get the words done, then it would look like this, right? And it would still look vandalized. So at this point, I think what we need to do is start fresh. That's intentionally blank. We need to repave. And if the city can help us with that, great. If not, then we would like to raise the money to make those improvements in the park so we can do this again. And this time cover it with a clear coat. We've been researching some anti-graffiti clear coats and, you know, we would just cover the whole driveway. And then there's traction beads you could put in, so it still remains safe. It's not slick. And at that point, it's just a matter of doing the research to pick the right ones. And I'm just showing you this because some people, when I was having conversations about this, they're like, is it safe to use? Is it safe to use? And here's some, you know, we're going to be real public with the safety features of whatever product we're, you know, going to go with. We'll make that decision together as a community. We're trying to figure that out right now. And then I think one thing that, you know, Trishay and I, and everybody's talking about, right, is, is this is not just about restoring the mural. We have an opportunity here, right? So how can we turn our collective anger into a positive forward movement for the black community? So it'd be great to have some kind of organized conversation or have one Google Doc that we can make to share ideas. But, you know, from this, is there one local or state law that we could rally to change? It could have a significant impact, right? Can we go super public with the legal punishment for hate crimes like this one to deter, you know, future ones? People asking what does community healing look like? And some people have even offered to install cameras in the park. They said, I'll pay for that, you know, is that invasive? Is that, maybe, but maybe it's just keeping everything safe. It's a city, you know, with the, with the park and any city, with the park late at night needs cameras, especially if there's knucklehead racists out there doing stuff like this. So, so we just want to talk about, you know, wonder about that, and we're just going to put that out there for the future. You know, Trishay is very accessible on social media, more so than me. It's easy to find her. You can find me too. We can share emails if we're allowed to. But we'd like to hear your ideas and hear your feedback on what that could look like. How do we turn this, this collective anger into a move forward, into a positive move forward for the black community? And that's all I have. So does anyone have any questions? Does anybody have any questions about that process, the physical process, why we need to repave it before moving forward?
Yeah, I was going to say, before we, before we jump into the process, I know that we, Council had received information from our Department of Public Works around trying to power wash some of the, that white paint off. And so I'd also like to know what we got with that or if that's a possibility. I do think that talking to other council members, we also agree that maybe we may have to just really repave that whole, you know, area. But I did want to give Mr. Akers, if possible, an opportunity to tell us what occurred or what DPW tried to do so far before we move, you know, forward.
Good evening, counsel. So our crew has been out the last couple of days with our tractor truck trying to power wash and with our street sweeper trying to get as much of that paint off as possible. We did get most of it off. However, it still is obvious that there was, there was some type of white paint down there and it was, it was vandalized. So, so a lot of it is off, but, but it's, it's still apparent that the vandalism had occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. I appreciate you all's work and the update. Okay, so I saw Councilmember Wilcoxen come off mute and then Councilmember Somerville, your hand was up. See you often.
I was down talking to the guys from DPS that were working on it on Monday and, and it seemed like they were making pretty good progress with that. I pointed out that this is very, this is on the hill sloping down to the river in that, let me back up. I think this is great. We need to, we need to get this fixed. I'm not sure how much the paving would be, and if that's in the budget for this year, we could do that another time next year. But we definitely need to get the mural fixed. My concern is that this is really close to the river. It runs downhill. When they were power washing, it goes down to a storm brain at the bottom of that parking lot, which then, you know, has a, has a reservoir that then kicks out into the, into the river itself. And so I did a little research. I talked to Trevor a little bit earlier today, and I did some research this afternoon on different products. He showed some here. There seem to be three different kinds of chemistry for this kind of stuff with, my concern was that things that don't stick often have PFOS in them. So I wanted to make sure that the products that are getting used are not toxic to the folks using them and also to, to the river because it's that close. And so there are some, some other products besides one these, he's shown that are based on siloxane, which is basically silicone, which is inert and, and certainly less toxic. The stuff that Trevor is showing is urethane based, and then there's other things that are fluorocarbon based. And those are the really toxic ones, the PFOS that we don't want to deal with, things like Teflon. So if we could, Trevor, I'll, I'll talk with you and Ron about, you know, the products that I've looked at for the siloxane based compounds. And their clear coats that can go over the top and things like that. And I just want to make sure that we're aware of, you know, the proximity to the river and what we're doing with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilcoxen. Councilmember Somerville?
Yeah, I was just curious, like ballpark numbers on what we'd be looking at to reseal it. If, if that's even something that we know yet.
You know, I haven't done the research on that, but I was actually going to ask, you know, do you all have a contractor? Who did you work with to do the asphalt sealing or to, you know, put a layer of asphalt down there? Did you have that somewhere on record? The, the person that you used. We did try to call a couple of people. We were doing the mural initially. It was hard to find someone that didn't just do city streets or like certain things, places they did it, certain places they didn't. And if you all happen to have that vendor on deck, then that could be a real easy first step.
I think that might be a question for Mr. Akers because I definitely don't know the answer to that.
So we do have a couple of contractors who are around that can do the work. There, there's, I know. Um, there, there's, I know one in particular that we've worked with in the past. Uh, the question's going to be scheduling. Um, you know, we are kind of late in the road season and, and there's a lot of work that's uh, groups and companies are trying to finish up. So we, we would need to, uh, have that conversation and, and try to figure out scheduling and timeframe and some of the details. But in short, yeah, there, there's some companies that we've worked with that, that we could ask to do this work.
Um, Councilmember Morgan, I see your hand is up.
Thank you so much. Um, I just want to state a few things for the record. Uh, I, I, I want to say that these are my thoughts only. They do not represent council. Um, I, I, this is, I don't have any, I just have some comments. Uh, I, I wonder how much it costs annually to replace the, um, the Elijah McCoy um, plaque that's defaced every year. Because it's going to be defaced every year because of whatever reasons that exist. Um, I do think indigenous lives are vital, but I do think that the Black Lives Matter is, is patronizing. Even though I know what people mean. Um, and I just want to remind everybody that, that again, this is an ugly thing that is taking place. But just a few years ago at Eastern, when something with graffiti of hate speech was written on the wall. Then though, everything took place and they come to find out it was somebody, uh, different, of a different orientation that committed that act. And it was embarrassing, um, for the city and for the EMU. And so, uh, I do think, uh, we do need a response. Um, and then I think we need to think about our annual budget for something. We hope that it doesn't keep happening, but I do think the fact that it's up is going to keep giving people a reason to display hate. Um, and I, I think again, so we'll keep fighting that back the ways that we know how. Um, but I do want to, uh, so again, I, I do think every, that we, we put ourselves in a position in every city across the country that is, uh, are isolating themselves and draw a line in the sand about who we support. And then there's people on the other side of that support. And so we just must be future minded and thinking about, uh, how we can, um, support these actions consistently, uh, annually even. Uh, and I hope that we can go a long time without this being defaced again. And I'm, and I'll support any, um, actions to, to reclaim that, um, just that unity that we need, that, that the mural represents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. Um, I saw Trishay, your hand was up and then Trevor.
Um, yeah, about the asphalt ceiling, I don't know. It was so strange. I just happened to get off on exit 183. And I was headed right by that gas station. I looked up to the left and it said asphalt company on this guy's, um, truck. And so I'm like, hey, you know, it's like, um, he specifically does driveways. Um, that is what his work is. And so I can forward that number to you. Uh, Mr. Akers, I don't know if you all would accept, um, someone, you know, outside of who you already work with. Um, but that just happened today. And so I thought I would bring that forward. Um, and we had also talked about, um, maintenance of this, um, prior to, um, doing it and understanding that. I, I know, you know, that's why we're trying to raise money and do some of the things that we do. So we can cover paint and things of this nature for even touch-ups. Because, um, even if no one defaced it, there would have to be touch-ups to it as well, uh, you know, after, um, winter months and things of that nature. So, um, and also I'm excited because if we can get this clear coating, um, that also would be an extra form of protection as well. So, um, those are some things that we have been talking about.
Thank you. Uh, Trevor, Mr. Stone.
Hey, uh, so this is in response to, to Anthony about the, the annual cleaning of it. Um, you know, this, the anti-graffiti clear coat is supposed to make that a non-issue. Like the paint won't be able to adhere to it. So if someone, you know, spills paint on it or spray paints it, it's just not going to stick. And then we can just mop it up and, and move forward. And so it's going to cost a mop head, you know, hopefully to clean that up. Um, yeah, we bought extra paint to touch it up in case somebody graffiti. I didn't know someone's going to kick a bunch of five gallon buckets down driveway. But once we clear coat this thing, um, it should be just, just a mop up job, you know, some rats.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, other comments or discussion? On this topic? Councilmember Wilcoxen, yes.
I was just reaching for the hand button here down at the bottom. So this, this, you know, there was talk about doing this on Sunday. I went down there, spent the afternoon in the park. That was an interesting, interesting day in our park, uh, with the governor showing up and other people, but, um, wh- what does this look like in terms of a timeline? I mean, it's certainly, I, you know, getting money together to do the paving. I don't know. You know, that seems like it's going to be significant enough that, that would require coming past us again, which means that, that goes into later in the year and things like that. I'm sure that, uh, typical asphalt ceiling, which would be black, also raises the interesting question of what's going to go into the river from that. There's non-hydrocarbon or non-PAH, uh, sealants that could be used for that. But, um, timeframe, people talking about doing this on Saturday, you know, what do we need to do as body to make this happen? And what do we have to do for approval? Tonight, to, to facilitate that timeline, or are we still working on that timeline?
Can I interject on the timeline piece?
Yes, please.
Um, so, um, everyone knows that whatever decisions are made tonight at council would dictate whatever the timeline is. Um, we put Saturday as a timeframe, just in case, um, we could get it done. Um, but we also let everybody know that, um, we would not be moving forward without, and talking to council and see what can be done. Um, so a quick update to let people know that this won't happen on Saturday, um, is something that we can definitely do. And, um, you know, so that we can just do this the right way. I would like to see it done like that, just so that it can have the maintenance and have the safety piece because we want to be good stores. If the city is in fact investing in something like this, we want to make sure that the city's dollars are not going to go to waste um, by having to replace and do all of that. So I think doing it, um, this right way would be, um, great. And I just hope it's something that we can, um, get done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Somerville, sorry.
Yeah, I was, uh, a few minutes ago, we were just talking about, I, I don't know, in my head, I'm like, just season wise, the weather's getting colder. And timeline wise for companies that would contract. Um, it seems like we might not be able to actually do like the resealing and stuff until like late spring. In my head, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know if Ron could like either nod yes or no to that. Um.
It's going to be weather dependent.
Yeah.
If, if, it, you know, certainly with the neck, with the monorail coming in the next couple of days, where it's very unlikely we'd get somebody to be able to come in to, to do that soon. But, um, if the weather holds out and we don't get a ton of rain, we may be able to get it done later in the fall. It's just really going to depend on contractor scheduling.
Yeah. So the other thing, the other thought that I had, um, a really easy way to kind of not even stress out about the cost of this, in the springtime, we should be getting another, um, like annual revenue sharing from the state of Michigan for, um, recreational cannabis sales. And I think that would be a great pot of money, no pun intended, to pull money from. So if we want to plan that far out, um, I feel like it'll give us more time. Um, and then for whatever celebration that, uh, Mr. Lawrence had in mind, it would, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about the financial side. And, um, we could make sure that we do it, you know, right this time to prevent any, you know, future problems like this. Just wanted to throw that out there into the conversation.
No, that's a really, um, valid and good point of the conversation around the timeframe, the weather, and also where some, some revenue could come from. So thank you, Councilmember Somerville. Um, Councilmember Wilcoxen, I saw your hand up, and then Councilmember Morgan.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Uh, Lisa Volker, who is on, uh, one of the attendants tonight, sent me a message. So one of the, one of the things about paving, um, is it's impermeable. And one of the things that, uh, has been mentioned numerous times in sustainability efforts and green infrastructure is to, uh, look into and, and price out permeable paving. So that the water, rather than running off and going straight into the river, soaks into the ground where it is. And so I think, uh, as we bid this out, we should, we should check that out. To see whether it's possible. We haven't tried this in the city as far as I know. Um, you know, this is technology that's been around for a while and, um, I think it is fairly expensive. That we could, uh, price that along with any other paving that goes along with this. Um, I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I was wondering, are we looking to be preempt, uh, preemptive in covering with, if we get this certain type of paint, um, to cover the other one off Michigan Avenue, just to avoid this from happening? Are we just going to isolate this one until something happens to the other?
That was going to be one of my questions as well. Should we go ahead and do the other mural as well? So thank you, Councilmember Morgan. Um, Mr. Stone? Oh.
There we go. Thanks. Alright, thanks, folks. I'll try to be quick. Hey, you, you know what? Um, your plan sounds very logistically sound as far as, you know, let's wait till spring. Let's raise the money, you know, um, and, and I understand like weather dependent, like that makes sense. Why lay the asphalt if it's just, if it's not going to set right, you know? You know, and at the same time, that would be a pretty big, uh, scar or bruise to carry through the, the cold winter months. If it just stayed like that, that would be, that would be tough. So I know that doesn't actually affect, that doesn't, uh, the fact that that would be tough to have through the winter doesn't all of a sudden make money appear in your bank account. And it doesn't mean the weather's going to agree with us. But if there was a way we could move quick on it, if there was a way that we could raise money quick on it to try to make that happen, um, then we would like to be a part of that. Just to see if we can get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen? I saw you pop up.
Uh, Mr. Morgan still has his hand up or?
I don't think it ever went down from the last time.
Okay. It was just first in line, so, um, you know, if we're repaving this, you know, there's lots of things coming to mind. You know, we, we had talked about repaving the, the path through, uh, the entire path through the park when, uh, somebody had mentioned this for an event. And we, we'd gotten estimates for that, not for this drive, but the, the path along the river. Um, all of that needs to be done at some point. And so the question is, you know, when was this going to be scheduled to do? Um, you know, it, there's money available through ARP for, um, from the state for parks improvements, things like that. We need to check into that. Um, I'm going to MML tomorrow and, and there's, uh, some sessions on, on ARP, so I can ask those questions there. But, um, you know, it seems like this, you know, I, I can appreciate wanting to get this done as quickly as possible. But this also seems like it could be a good two-phase thing. If, if the annual maintenance was already considered. Um, you know, getting this corrected now and working on, you know, all of the things that need to have, happen. So that it's not just blocked, you know, piecemeal done to various other things. Um, we may have more options with more time to look at the, the funding, um, with grants from, from the Safe for ARP and things like that. So, um, you know, maybe this, maybe there should be a two-phase. We, we get this taken care of, cleaned up as quickly as possible. And then have a longer term strategy for, for dealing with the park in general.
Thanks, Councilmember Wilcoxen. Um, Mr. Akers, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you have, um, any idea if the maintenance for this was on the horizon or, or no, for this area that Councilmember Wilcoxen was talking about?
With, with regards to the actual driveway, there, there wasn't, uh, any additional maintenance planned. Um, there have been some conversations about, uh, redoing some of the trails in Riverside Park, uh, with the county. Um, we don't have a definitive timeline on it yet, or even if it's a possibility, but, but we are talking about it. Um, so that's something, certainly something I can follow up with them on and, and, you know, we can report back.
Thank you. Um, right before Mr. John Chance speaks, what just came to mind when I was listening to Councilmember Wilcoxen talk about maybe a two-phase approach. Because I, I totally understand what, um, Trevor was saying about, like, you know, the length of time to have to look at this defaced, you know, area. But it also brings me back to thinking about something that, um, I want to say Gail and I were talking about on Sunday around like healing, um, and using the opportunities maybe in the interim to create or do some type of activities around community healing, um, that could maybe, uh, happen in the meantime, between time before, you know, the second phase or the repainting happened. So that way, we're not just ignoring the fact that something happened there or that, you know, it's here for this reason. That there are racist folks who didn't want it there, whoever, whoever those people are. Um, but that we're acknowledging it and discussing it and talking about it as a community. I think that would be really important either way. Whether it happens right away or, you know, down the line, um, creating opportunities for us to actually have open discussion around, um, healing and restoration and, you know, for folks to be able to share feelings about what happened is going to be important too. And it could be a good piece to do in the interim while we are, um, planning this out so that it makes most sense. Um, Mr. John Chance?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, the, the, the kind of people who do things like this are, uh, they really feed off of the attention. Um, and I think one of the things that I have noticed with vandalism really of any kind is if you just get it cleaned up quickly. And I don't want to say you don't make a big deal out, out of it because it is a big deal, but, you know, you know, you don't show it. You just take care of it and move on. It kind of takes some of the wind out of their sails, so to speak. Um, so I am interested in, in getting this remedied as soon as possible. Um, and I, I hear, uh, Mr. Wilcoxen's point about maybe we can, you know, maybe being able to pull from some future funds we had slated to actually do maintenance on this. But I wonder, um, maybe this is a good question for Mr. Akers. If Survivor Speak were able to raise some money to, I don't know if they were going to, you know, maybe paint, uh, paint black around the borders of the letters and then refill in the letters and then maybe do some coating or something like that. Is the city in a position to provide the labor to get the work done? Um, you know, is there a way that we can participate together and get this remedied quickly?
That is a good question. I would have to, uh, coordinate with Kim Jones or HR director, talk about, you know, how we would go about that with, whether it's, um, volunteer hours, if we could do it as employment hours. I, I can look into it. Um, you know, I, I think with the maintenance options that we're talking about, you know, there, I mean, there is a chance we could do have asphalt sealing done still this year if the weather holds out. You know, if that's the, the direction that we want to move, I can start calling companies in the morning and seeing who has availability to do what and get some costs together. Um, but certainly, you know, painting around the, the letters is something, is an option too. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we can figure out.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Um, are there any other comments, um, in this discussion from council or our additional panelists?
Um, yeah, if I could, uh, just real quick, um, don't, definitely don't want to rush or push. Uh, I understand the need to maybe wait, but I just want to say, and I think we seen it on the news. Um, and I was down there and there was an elderly woman, two elderly women that were walking. And she just said, you know, this is, this doesn't feel safe anymore, you know? And like, um, honestly, being down there, just even seeing it, it's just really eerie, like, you know? I don't know. So I don't know if that changes the theme, but I, I love the ideal around, I'm doing some trauma healing. Um, and some healing work, um, behind this. Because there's just, there's definitely been some damage and, and hurt to a lot of people in the community within this regard. And I think the community really have become vested in, in this, right? And, um, so I don't, I don't know. I mean, I understand the need to wait, but I also would like to see it move forward if we could at all possible do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Trishay. I will, I will concur that being down there, um, when people are walking into the park or walking past it on Sunday, the way they were pausing and stopping and like looking at us for answers. It was, it was a strange feeling. I don't even really know how to label it, but folks are really impacted by seeing it. Um, and also I have, you know, received feedback from folks around just the images that they saw on, on Facebook and stuff of it. It really has, um, negative, negatively impacted, um, a lot of people. Um, who, who probably saw or feel, um, like this wouldn't happen here, even though we know it was a possibility. So I do think the trauma healing, um, that, that is an important piece. No matter how we plan to, to tackle this, that piece definitely, I think, needs to be. that, that is an important piece, no matter how we plan to, to tackle this, that piece definitely, I think, needs to be involved. Councilmember Morgan. Is your hand up on accident?
Alright, this is my last comment. Um, I, I, I do wanna thank everybody who, uh, who had worries to share about thi- this atrocity that happened in our city. And, um, and I, I, just to, to be clear, um, when I was online today, I did make a, a comment or made a, um, just like the charge, like if, uh, like if somebody was to see someone defacing something like that, or like if, like a hate crime is a hate crime is a hate crime. If someone was being attacked because of their orientation, or someone was potentially attempting to be lynched, or someone write these things. So in my, I would like to talk more in the future about what, uh, our, um, policy is on hate crimes and how do we, how do we deal with those if we were to, uh, litigate or convict people within our city? If they were to be found out, if there were ways to, um, to, to catch people, what are our policies and, uh, how clear should they be? And, um, I'd just like to have a conversation about that in the future because it, it's a little different, uh, different types of crime. And I think these crimes here are much more personal and diabolical in nature. Um, so I was, I would like to talk more to our police chief and just our attorney and just to see what, as a city, our take is on, on hate, on hate crime. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. Um, Councilmember Somerville.
Oh yeah, just, um, to kind of res- offer some response to what Councilmember Morgan just mentioned, um, our county prosecutor, uh, back like maybe five months ago. He has like a special hate crime, like investigation unit, I believe. If you're interested in, I can try to find some information and share that with Anthony, but I fully support where your head's at with that. And I think that maybe we could invite our county prosecutor to one of our council meetings.
Thank you.
And I'm interested too on a local level too. Uh, I, thank you so much for that information, Councilmember Somerville.
And I don't wanna put Lieutenant Yucus on the spot, but, um, he's on our meeting tonight as the chief is out. Um, and so, you know, maybe that would be something that we could either send his way so he can give us some information or send out to council. Maybe what we have already currently like in place, um, regarding, you know, hate crimes or crimes of this nature, uh, in the city.
Sorry, turning my video working here, hold on. There I am.
Hi.
Hi. Um, yeah, I mean, obviously we take this matter extremely serious here at the police department. And we are devoting every resource that we can to the investigation. I can't go into a lot of details, obviously, about, um, the specifics of it. But, um, I can tell you that we've been in contact with all of our local law enforcement partners, with, uh, federal law enforcement partners, and everybody's on board to try to bring this to a conclusion. So, um, hopefully down the road, I can give you a little more information. But what I will say right now, what we do need is we need to develop a timeline of when this actually happened. And we've been struggling to do that. So, if anyone on this meeting or that's listening can just talk to their friends and their neighbors, find out if anybody was in the park anytime overnight, um, on the eighteenth into the morning of the nineteenth, prior to nine thirty in the morning, because that's when we received the call. We really need to try to nail down a timeline. So just that tiniest little bit of information could be really useful.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, so yes, if anyone has any information, please share it because we do. I, I definitely want to know what happened or have this come to a close. So, uh, I'll definitely be sharing that out, you know, to my neighbors and folks in the community who may know something or know someone potentially who knows something. So, thank you for that. Let's see. So, wh- where we are right now is we haven't actually made a decision around, um, where do we go from here as far as the city's support? And, uh, sorry, when the boxes move, I get so like, I'm like, oh, somebody moved, okay. Where we go from here in this moment, whether we do a, a two-phase approach or we do this right away. And so I think what I would like to see to end this conversation, um, you know, soon is consensus around where do we go from here? Do we wanna put something concrete in motion? Um, you know, what are we gonna do as a body so that we can let Trevor and Treshay also know what type of work they need to be doing to prepare. Um, so Councilmember Wilcox, and I saw your hand pop up.
I, I just wanted, uh, to comment on, on, on the timeline. Um, you know, the question was whether the paint was wet at nine thirty in the morning when people got there. Because if there was still wet paint in that, that it happened not that long before that, because that kinda latex will, will firm up and, and dry within a couple hours. Um, so I was just curious if, uh, that was, observed at the time at nine thirty.
Yeah, and real quick, it, some of it was still wet where it was, where it was thicker. But, but a lot of it was, was already drying. Um, so again, it would lead us to believe it had been there for some time. But I know people walk through that park all day and all night. And a lot of people are there in the morning taking their dog for a walk or, um, just getting their exercise. You know, if someone was there at six and saw it, or someone was there at, at six thirty and, and didn't see it. You know, those are just, just those tiny little things are, are really, really the one thing we need to nail down, right?
Thank you. Thank you. Um, other thoughts from council? So Trevor and Treshay, what do you need from us? Like, what are you looking for from us tonight? Because I, I definitely don't wanna leave the conversation without like any type of understanding of where we're going with this. Um, so what information do you think you need from us?
I think, you know, because in order to move forward, we would have to know, um, you know, if it's possible to have it repaved, or and I know we, we won't know that tonight, um, or if we should move. I guess it's up in the air based on that piece, because if we can't have it repaved, then we would have to think about a strategic way to, um, you know, put a Band-Aid on it, basically. And the hard part, I will say, um, I was over there today, even, um, places that were chipped before. I think with that power washing may have broken it up a little more. So there are some more cracks there, which I think would make it really rough to put that Band-Aid on it. But it, but I think if we do have to just go ahead and paint something, we'll definitely have to paint in between because the paint is still there in between as well. Oh, also, and, um, I left, just left from down there a little while ago. And from where the paint like, um, it's like rubbery. So it's like you could try to pull it up. But there's that element too. We would have to use, what do you call those things? Scrapers? To try to get that portion up as well. So, I mean, I guess the number one thing would be finding out if, if that repavement can happen. And then if not, we'd have to revamp to see how to further clean it so that we could go ahead and just try to, put something down and, and, and paint it until spring.
Clerk Alanga.
If I could interject something really quick, I'm assuming this is a project that's, that will be, if we repave it, it will be over twenty-five thousand dollars. That would require, uh, council approval. This is a project that will need to be bitted out. So that's gonna take a little bit of time. This is probably not gonna be able to get approved until the second, e- even if the bids come in quickly, we're probably not gonna have this to be able to bring it to council until the second meeting in October, October nineteenth. And that's gonna get pretty close to when construction season is ending. So I think the possibility of repaving it is, it's not gonna happen. Just with the, the ordinances that we have in place and the requirements that we have for bidding. So I think with that in mind, it might just make sense to just touch up what is currently present there. And then in the spring, move forward with a larger project.
Thank you, Clerk Alanga, for that clarification on the, the council process that would be required as well, because I was curious too. Um, Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, and this is why I'm wondering where maybe, um, or maybe, uh, Survivor Speaker, maybe some other organization would be better able to, um, raise money for this since really we can't. It might be faster that way, if there's a way for us to provide the labor or get the word out and have volunteers or something like that. I, I feel like there's gotta be a way for us to, to work together and, and bridge this financial gap. It seems like that's not gonna be through council anytime soon. Um, so I don't know if, um, Treshay or, or Trevor have an idea of what their capacity might be?
Right, so, uh, we actually are fundraising, um, right now. Um, and as a matter of fact, within two days, I think we have, um, been given about two thousand dollars in, in funds. I, we've had so many people say, hey, we'll buy the paint. Well, the paint is, you know, it's twenty-three hundred dollars, you know? So if we reach out to these people with a strategic plan, um, about how much we need, then yes, I believe that that could be something that would happen. And so with council's permission, I would like to reach out to the individual that I seen today. I got his number and connect him with you, Mr. Akers, to see maybe if we can get a, um, what do you call it? A, uh, a proposed, um, cost of, you know, what they would charge. And then that would give us something to shoot for as far as what we need. The community is outraged and they want to do something about it. So, um, I do believe that we definitely can raise these funds because they are coming in now.
Thank you. Councilmember Somerville.
Yeah, sorry, I just, just for clarification, we would still be required to bid out the labor even if outside funds were raised or no? I just have a question about how, or how that would work.
I'd have to defer to the, the city attorneys regarding gift.
I'm not sure if the gift changes the ordinances with regards to the, uh, what needs to be bid and what does not need to be bid, what's under the, the manager's, um, authority.
Okay, that's helpful. I was just curious.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stone, I saw your hand up, but then it went down. Do you have something you wanted to share?
You know, I, I'll just say, uh, that, you know, when we're talking about cleaning this up, you know, and, and, and just kinda doing some kind of temporary cleanup on it. I don't know if that asphalt paint comes in black. Maybe it does. But, but to, to, you know, to paint the letters yellow and then to paint black like crisp around all the edges is gonna, you know, quadruple the time, uh, that it takes to get it done. And maybe if we get enough people, we could still get it done. I was surprised how fast, you know, things got done because the community came behind that mural so hard. So maybe we'll just, we'll just try to raise the team. But, but, uh, yeah, if there's some way to, to do asphalt instead, I think that, that is a lot faster and better use of, you know, uh, piles of community members' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilcox then.
I guess this is, earlier in this conversation, I was mentioning the, just having the asphalt sealed. And so if you seal over the top of what's there and then you just redo the mural, there's no painting involved. And yeah, who would buy black paint for asphalt, right? Doesn't make any sense to me. But, um, and so, you know, the, the sealants that I was talking about before, we take care of that problem. But I don't know what you'd have to do to the asphalt to prepare for that sealant if it's got latex, you know, on top of it, whether that sealant's gonna work. I'm just thinking chemistry here because that's where my mind goes. But, um, again, I, I think, you know, uh, quick strategies are, are the way to go because, um, you know, the longer this stays, you know, there's two different thoughts. The longer it stays, the more people know that there are racist people hanging out and doing vandalism. But, you know, in order to get, you know, some healing and, and movement on this, I think there's a need to move as quickly as possible on this. And I don't, I don't see how within the mechanisms that we have available to us for, for bids and things like that and pricing out those things, that, that, that is in the same timeline that people are thinking about. Lots of people have, you know, said on social media that they are willing to put in the labor and, and, and help to repaint this. And I, I think for me, you know, the most costly, like, thing is to, is to repaint it. And at some point, you know, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so yeah, I think that we are, you know, we're kinda going around, um, in circles on the, on, on this part now because it's been explained that, you know, the mechanisms like Councilmember Wilcox and said and that Clerk Alanga explained would take longer for us to get through this process if the city had to, um, spearhead, you know, bids and funding and all those pieces. So, you know, my personal recommendation would be to repaint it and for, you know, Survivor Speaks, Trevor, Treshay, with the, you know, fundraising that you're doing, um, move in that direction and then we fill in how we can support you in whatever ways that we, we can. Because I don't think that if it's left to us having to lead the charge in that direction, that it will happen even before the, the construction season ends, and then that would still push it to next year. Um, and I don't think that's what anybody seems to want as far as, you know, in the community, what you are sharing with us. Um, if I'm off base, um, please someone, you know, interject. Uh, but that's what I feel like I'm hearing. Councilmember Wilcox.
Lo and behold, here I am. Um, so would we need a resolution at this time to, to say this is what we're gonna do? Uh, or, you know, a motion to say, let's move forward with the painting, um, authorize, you know, Mr. Akers to explore sealing the, the, the asphalt prior to painting. And I don't know what the discretion is for, for that amount. I, I have no idea what sealing that section of the, the driveway would cost.
Yeah. Uh, Clerk Alanga, do you have any insight?
So, the DPS director can begin to, you know, research exactly what needs to be done. And then we can move forward from there. In terms of repainting and doing a touch-up, if council wanted to, we'd also have to look at the special events calendar. Um, I don't know if Ron, you have access to that or Bonnie's son has access to that. But, uh, we'd have to make sure that there's no events on those days. The gates would be locked to, uh, not allow public to be there. But I think we need to solidify a date. And then council, a motion. So, do we have, is there anything planned there this weekend? Does any staff member on know?
The only event that I recall that was planned for Saturday is I think there's a, a Eastern group that's doing a cleanup in Riverside Park. Um, but I think that's during the morning. I don't think that, um, I don't think there's anything else. I'd have to double check.
So if council wanted to make a motion, um, providing the, the park to, to Survivor Speak and that organization to do the touch-ups and then to have a larger project, um, once the springtime, uh, construction season starts. Direct staff to start researching what that would take.
So, Trevor, I saw you were about to come off mute. Um, are you all wanting to do this, do it on Saturday for the touch-ups? Or do you need to go back and look at dates?
You know, I, I think, um, Treshay, I wanna hear your thoughts, please. But, you know, I, I think that just kind of like I showed you on that visual, right? That if we just paint the letters and there's still like white streaks behind it, it's still, the words are there, the statement looks trashed. And as Treshay was saying, it still gives a feeling of lack of safety. You know, I'm, I understand eventually we can get that cleaned up, but that's specifically for lack of like, of safety. It's a long time to let that go. And so, so, um, yeah, uh, you know, may, may, maybe I can't think of option C right now, but, um, but I'll look for the, the black asphalt paint and see if somebody thought that was a good idea.
I'm gonna say, go out on a limb and just say that maybe we should wait. I don't want to, right? Um, I think others don't want to, they wanna move forward, but, um, it would just seem like a waste to do that, you know what I mean?
it would just seem like a waste to do that, you know what I mean? Like, um, and then painting around the letters, I don't know how, you know, how we would do that. Um, i- and if, I don't want to keep going on and on with this. We gotta make a decision. Um, if we have to paint it and just brighten the letters up, you know, we will do that, but I just think, you know, as a we want the city to be reflected in a manner that is, is in excellence. And I just feel like if, um, we don't have it right, it just, it won't be in excellence. It'll just be something that's we just put together. Um, and I don't think anybody would do good by that.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback. And I think, you know, what, what stands out to me is that I, I do agree in doing things the right way the first time, but I also have to be aware and we have to be cognizant of like the processes that we have to follow as the city. And so regardless, it would take a while for us to go through those proper channels to make sure that we're doing this upright. So either way, for us, we wouldn't be able to turn something around by Saturday, even if we all wanted to.
Right.
Um, and so it's tough to think about like, oh, waiting, because I, I totally receive, you know, the, the trauma and the feelings, but process is also process for us and we can't negate that. And so it, it is a tough spot to be in, in making this decision. Um, but I, I personally would say brighten it, touch it up, show that we are taking steps. Do these other pieces around healing, come together and figure that out and be really clear about, um, why we're doing it in this way so that there's no mistake, right? That we, we wanted to do this and, and fix it and do it right. Um, but unfortunately, that may not be able to happen in that timeframe, but we want to show, you know, that we are also committed to like removing as much of, um, this negative energy and negative stuff from the space as possible. And sometimes your best is your best, right? That you can do. Um, so I'll stop there, but, uh, Mr. Stone?
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, um, so, so I might be with Trishay on this. Like, it's killing me to, to have to, you know, have that stay as it is, but if we do all the work and get 100 people to come down and like bust for 10 hours and get, you know, and get it crispy, the letters look good, and then there's still these white streaks behind it. And then, you know, uh, this is worst case scenario, but that's kind of what we're dealing with, right? And then if someone comes and chucks more paint on it, and we still don't have the ceiling on it, that's more energy that was poured into this. It just got in, in one sense disintegrated. And, and I'm, uh, you know, so I don't know the right play, but that's, that's what I'm thinking about. That's what I'm thinking.
I, I receive that. I do. I receive that for sure. Um, Councilmember Morgan?
Um, in, in my opinion, it, since the timelines don't seem to coincide, it'd still be a show cause of unity if there was a some kind of event there where some kind of, it could be a rally, it could be, uh, again, it would take back our justice, take back our, you know, it could be, like, it doesn't have to deal with work. That is work. We still can get people over time, you know, uh, monthly, just as a remembrance. That is, that's, since, um, um, Mr. Stone mentioned that it's gonna be, oh, oh, like if we don't get it done till spring, it's a reminder, and that reminder is still gonna enrage people, still gonna cause people to feel and have, uh, energy toward it. So I do think it's, it being there can still rally people. So I still think that if something's gonna happen Saturday, an immediate response is necessary, even if it isn't a cleanup. Just so people can see the defaces, for people who haven't seen it up close. So I still think it's an opportunity to get people together, um, to somehow, uh, talk to the people about, uh, work crews and things of that nature for the future. So just because, uh, the cleanup and the repaving won't be done, that it still doesn't mean some type of action can occur. So I think those are separate, but still going toward the same goal. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
We already have a DJ, um, for Saturday because we were gonna be doing Peace Day in Ipsy and we postponed it. So we already have a DJ. We could likely go out and just do a healing session, um, and, uh, just come together as a community because, and you're right, Councilmember Morgan, I think, you know, just to, um, come together, you know, would be suffice. And then we can explain, you know, um, to people that we want to do this right and do it thoughtfully.
It, it, it'd be a great space for community dialogue, you know?
Agreed. Yeah, and, and, and explaining the intricacies that even some of us didn't know about what, what it takes to fix this, right? To, to, to bring this, um, mural back to life, basically. So, um, Mr. Jones Chan?
Yeah, I think whatever we do, as long as we're moving in a positive direction, even if it's just touching on what's there. And, you know, although it might not be perfect, it does show community solidarity and resilience. And, you know, as, as most of us probably know, you know, resilience sometimes means you're gonna do twice as much and get half as far. But, um, I don't think that's anything people in Ipsy aren't used to. And I think it's still a worthwhile cause, um, even if we have to come back and redo it, even if they come back, you know, two weeks from now and do the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as long as we keep coming back, that's, you know, I think that's what, that's what counts and, um, I would like to see us have a long-term strategy for, for remedying this, obviously. But, um, there must be some way that we can figure out how to make it look as good as possible as quickly as possible.
Councilmember Moore, okay, thank you.
Let's go. Hope he's okay. Um, as good as possible, as quickly as possible. Um, I think, uh, I think it'll be good for the community.
Uh, Lieutenant Yukis and then Councilmember Somerville?
Real quick, just a, a quick point. I, I just checked with Wendy. There is nothing in the park this weekend. There's, it's not reserved for any reason, so if there was to be some kind of community healing event out there, um, it wouldn't be interfering with anything that was already scheduled.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Somerville?
Awesome. That's good to hear that there's space available for that this weekend. Um, I guess in like hopes to maybe bring this to a close, like, I don't want to do anything that Trishay and Trevor don't want to do because, like, you all really spearheaded this. Um, so I think we understand the complications of the timeline, so I kind of want you to tell us what you want to do. Like, do you want us to sport, support an easy, quick like Band-Aid and then hold off until spring and try to really do something more sustainable or, um, do you not wish to have anything done short-term, like a quick, easy Band-Aid? Um, and would you prefer just to wait to spring? I just, that's kind of where I like, I want to know what you all want to do. It sounds like you want to wait until spring. I support whatever the two of you kind of decide. Um, so I'm just kind of hoping to get some, uh, feedback on that.
I just got, um, feedback from community, um, that we should have something Saturday, just touch up the letters. And, um, you know, on that note, maybe it's a, it's just a reminder, well, of, um, everybody knows what happened, and maybe it's just a reminder that we have more work to do, literally, and um, you know, the other kind of work. Um, because then at least, you know, my heart goes out to the woman that walks there every morning, her and her friend, you know? And if they have to see that every morning, like the way that it is, I just, I don't know that that would be right, so. Um, Trevor, what do you say? I say let's just go ahead and move forward with the touch-up and we will all come back to the table in the spring. I just thank you all for taking the time for this conversation.
Yeah, there, there's not a good solution right now. Um, so, you know, I think if Trishay, you know, is leaning toward touch-ups, then I'm gonna do that and, and try to just, uh, you know, sort of my schedule, be there on, on Saturday and see what we can do. And, uh, you know, maybe even though it's, it's beat up, maybe it's still kind of like, uh, you know, our word on top, you know, we saw the top layer of it, in a sense, you know? We did something, they did something, we did something. And, and maybe it shows some kind of resilience. I, I don't know, you know, um, that, that's where I'm at. That's where I'm at. It, uh, you know, it'd be great if we could just get this, you know, some kind of, a couple of solid donations and just get that thing paid. I'd almost rather have it blank than have like a jacked up repaint job, you know, just so we could start fresh. Um, but, you know, I'm following Trishay on this. So she says touch-up, I'm on touch-ups.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Uh, Trishay and I had talked on, um, Sunday afternoon about, about, you know, repainting the, the letters and, and leaving the white there. I mean, there are things that, that could be done with the white that's outside of the letters. Um, you know, have that as a, a signage for people that came down to paint, you know, put their names in the white with, uh, you know, some other color paint to show just the solidarity and the people that are there that are, that are, um, that are interested in that. I mean, I, I think there's lots of different options for that, but, um, I think, you know, getting it covered up is, is, you know, getting the, the, the message, um, reestablished is important.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I agree. I think getting, getting a touch-up might not be the best, I, the best answer, but right now it may be the best answer that we have for the moment. And I think it is, um, it can be viewed as a way of, of pushing back, fighting back, right? And knowing that the, the long game, the end game is to completely redo this um, and make sure that it is, you know, up to standards that, that we want and expect and that you all want and expect. Um, and I, I received the feelings and the emotion that I feel like I, I'm, I, I was hearing um, around, you know, not knowing what to do, but also the fact that we even have to do this at all, right? Um, but I think at this point, if this might be a good point to just bring the conversation to a close as we there is no right answer, so we just kind of have to make a decision. And so, um, based on what Councilmember Somerville asked around what Trevor and Trishay want to do and Trevor leaning against what Trishay, um, stated as maybe a a way to go and agreeing with that, then we should just move in that direction. If that's what they want to do, and then we support them how we can as individuals, and then come back to the table as a council, um, to put the, the, the right process in order to make sure that this is done well. Um, so if there's nothing that anyone else has that's just burning, um, to say, then I think we should, we can bring the discussion to a close.
Support.
And I thank you, Trishay and Trevor, so much for being here and really dialoguing with us about this. Um, it's unfortunate that we even have to be having the conversation. Um, so I appreciate you all attending tonight and, um, you know, including us in the conversation around what to do next. Um, so, thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your work, now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Whew, all right, y'all. That was a little heavy for me, I will say. So, um, I think, I'm sorry, Clerk Linga, what's next on the agenda?
Uh, council, the next item on the agenda is Board and Commission Communications. Um, recently, the Sustainability Commission passed a resolution, a, a resolution to support the bag band repeal. Uh, the resolution was in the packets. Um, if there is support from two council members, um, that resolution, or council to forward that to the state legislature will appear on the October 5th agenda. Is that right?
Councilmember Somerville, I saw your hand pop up, and then Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yeah, um, I would like to make a most, motion to forward a letter of support to our state senator that introduced that legislation.
Second that.
So you're, you're doing that on the next meeting, or do you want a, just a letter of support sent?
If, if it makes more sense to put a resolution on the next meeting, but I'm also, I'd be fine with just like a letter being drafted that just, what's better for you, Clerk Linga?
Sorry, can we get, um, Councilmember Morgan to mute? Thank you.
I, I always appreciate time to actually draft a resolution that's a little bit more powerful with actual uh, clauses in that resolution indicating who the clerk's department is forwarding to the resolution to. So, rather than just preparing a letter saying this is something council supports, it has a little bit more bite to it.
Awesome, I agree. Sounds like Steve and I both want it on the next agenda.
All right, I will have it on the October 5th agenda.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda, whenever you're ready, Clerk Linga.
The next item on the agenda is Board and Commission Liaison Reports. Uh, the first report coming from the Police Advisory Commission. Which is Councilmember Morgan.
Actually, we have our meeting coming up this Thursday, uh, the 23rd.
Human Relations Commission?
The next meeting is next month.
Arts Commission?
Nothing since the last meeting.
Parks and Recreation Commission?
Nothing at this time.
Sustainability Commission?
Um, the the resolution that was forwarded, there was another resolution that was forwarded about, uh, plastics that will, that will be coming up for discussion at the next Sustainability Commission meeting, so there will be another one of those, those you both, uh, put forward by Desire Simmons. Um, I think they're both, um, you know, they're small moves to, to show support, but I think they're important things to, to, uh, have go forward to the state legislator. So, uh, we'll hopefully bring that up with the, the next, uh, we can get that set forward from sustainability at the next commission meeting.
HDC?
Sorry, nothing to report.
Planning Commission?
I commissioned that last week and I get that report and, uh, ZBA has, uh, not yet met.
Okay, moving on to the next section, liaison reports. Uh, first being Semcar, which I believe is the mayor's. Uh, next is Washita Area Transportation Study.
Sorry, having a little Zoom issue there. Um, yeah, sorry, meeting this month was canceled, so, um, really, actually nothing to, I guess, report in that respect.
Urban County? Oh, that would be the mayor as well, not here. YDDA?
Good evening. Uh, we had a meeting last week, talked about Michigan Main Street.
And then Friends of Rutherford Pool?
Hmm, nothing at this time.
Moving on, council proposed this.
All right. Um, since I see you on my screen, Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Uh, I didn't really have anything prepared. Um, going to Eminem Hall tomorrow with Andrew and Joe and, uh, various other people, so I'll bring back a report from that for our meeting in October. Um, looks like an interesting agenda with some good breakout meetings. There's a lot about, uh, building community, um, and so, uh, both economically and, and spiritually and emotionally too. So, um, I'll bring back, uh, information and gather. Thanks.
Awesome. Enjoy. Councilmember Simmons?
I don't have it then tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Somerville?
I have nothing tonight other than just to express my disappointment at what happened at Riverside Park with the Black Lives Matter mural. I'm glad that we have, um, people like Trishay and Trevor in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Jones Chan?
Uh, nothing much to report, you know, like, uh, Councilmember, uh, or Miss Somerville, I am, uh, disappointed about what happened, but I'm, I'm glad to see that we have a lot of people who are upset by it. We have a lot of people who are willing to work to fix it. And I just want to lift up all the people over the last few months who have done things like, you know, put on the Jazz Series and, you know, get the Black Lives Matter mural started and finished and what, whatever happens, this is a place with a lot of very good people in it. And I don't think anybody should, uh, take that for And I don't think anybody should uh take that for granted, because we could be wherever these other people came from.
Agreed, thank you, Mr. Jones Chan. Councilmember Morgan. Any council proposed business tonight?
I got, I got one item, thank you so much. I was, you know, um, thank you so much. Um, I echo all the sentiments that were shared by council. Um. Friday, October first, it's gonna be a um, Ipsilani football game versus Chelsea, and at the halftime, um. Been organizing a a connection between uh the school board and 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 city council, so we're gonna present them with a twenty-five thousand dollar check. Um, uh, it, uh, us, uh, a symbolic check um for our support for their sports and arts program, and they're gonna present us a big. Uh, key uh for excellence of education. Um, the 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 check will be presented by the city manager. To the superintendent, and the superintendent will indeed give the the city manager the key. And I was, I talked to Dr. Reeves, and uh basically I got all of us some swag, so if you guys want to send me your sizes. Um, I got shirts, hats, and some things for us uh from YCS. I think this would be a great way to uh show our solidarity for the schools and them to support council. Uh, so if you guys, we all have free admittance, I'll be out of town October first. Um, so, but uh, it's already on. Works, and I hope that you guys send me some sizes, so we can get you some swag stuff, so we can make a better union between our city and our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. That sounds really cool. Um, oh, myself, haha, yes. Um, so I just echo the sentiments of, you know, up here and around. What happened at Riverside Park, of course, again, going down there, that was just not, it didn't feel good to see that. Um, so I can only imagine folks have to see it or regularly if that was there, you know, the path they walk every day or what not, having to see that. So I'm glad that we're taking steps regardless to to remedy the situation and also focusing um on healing for the community. Um, and then the other thing, uh, I I posted about it on my Facebook page today, but I had an opportunity to speak to. Um, two of the FEMA workers who have been going through the community and knocking doors and try, you know, trying to get in touch with. Um, our neighbors who may have had issues with the flooding, um, and one of them, um, we stood outside for a while and we talked. And I really just appreciated the energy behind um the work that they were doing in this community and their commitment. To figuring out how to support individuals who are impacted. Um, you know, they're out here in the rain, they, you know, uh. One of the workers um is originally from Detroit, and so, you know, was a little familiar with Ipsilani, and so it was just really nice to have. Um, a conversation with those who are in the community, um, and see them for myself, number one, I knew they had been around, but I hadn't seen anyone. Um, and talk with them and have them share information with me that I can also share out with uh community members if they miss them. Or have additional questions or need to get in contact with someone, so just wanted to lift that, you know, I had an opportunity to interact and engage with. Um, two of the workers today, uh, and just very pleased that they're, they're here to help us and, you know, our constituents. Who who still need support from, you know, these floods that started back in June, so um, that is it for me on tonight. And I think next is communications from the mayor, she is out, um, as well as the city manager. Do you have anything, clerk Alanga?
I do not.
All right, well.
Would you look at that?
At the time, yes.
I'm moved to adjourn.
All in favor. Hey, uh, all right, the the eyes have it, as the mayor would say, so. Um, I hope everyone has a really great night. Thank you for a good meeting and thoughtful dialogue. Bye-bye.